So either our co-chair Shayla or Ellen would like to call the meeting to order.
Good morning, everyone. Sorry I couldn't be there in person. We would like to go ahead and call this meeting to order. It is ten oh nine. And I think we're gonna get started with the roll call and introductions. Patrice, would you mind doing roll call for us?
Matt Malone.
Here.
Beto Garibaldi.
Present.
Lisa Eman Crowe, present. Ellen McDonald, present. Simon O'Connell for Dinah Beck.
Present.
Shannon Orton for Lynn Mackey, present. LaSonte Smith. Gilbert Salinas.
Present.
Melvin Willis.
Here.
Dana Bonner.
Present.
Michael Pearson.
Present.
Renell Ellis. He's running a little late, so I'm sure he can hear shortly. Alicia Jackson, present. Cheryl Sedut.
And Sedut.
Excuse me. Sorry, Cheryl.
It's okay. Present.
Iggy Crowder, present. And Stephanie Metley, here. All right.
And then if you wanna go ahead and do a round of introductions, and we can start in the room and then move to Zoom.
Shannon Orton, I'm the coordinator of assessment, research, and evaluation.
Melvin Willis, Racial Justice Coalition.
Beto Garibaldi, Chief Counsel, Spanish Sheriff's Office, Facility Commander.
Morning.
Stephanie Metley, rise.
Matt Malone, Chief Counsel, Congress Superior Court.
Iggy Crowder, Executive Director.
Simon O'Connell, DA's office.
Alana Matthews, DA's office.
Michael Pearson with Key Counsel PC.
Alicia Jackson, Reentry Manager, Hope Solutions.
Denise Sebkevich, Office of Reentry and Justice.
Trithi Malcottla, DA's office.
Patrice Gilery. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Good morning, Kiki Ferris, Contracasta County Provocation.
Patrice Gilery from Office of Reentry and Justice. Ariana Younglett, Office of Reentry and Justice.
Thank you. And then we'll go to Zoom. I see Rob.
Hey y'all, I'm Rob Kenton from the Center for Police and Equity. Thank you.
Juanisha.
Hi, everyone. Juanisha Bart with Center for Policing Equity.
Liz.
Hello, Liz Vavola, also with the Center for Policing Equity.
Chris.
Good morning, everyone. Chris James with the W. Haywood Burns Institute.
Cheryl. In, in the spirit of the room, Cheryl, 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 Sedut. Racial, racial justice. Racial Justice Coalition, part of the oversight body. There is feedback in the room, just FYI, Doug.
That was great, Cheryl. I'm Doug Leach, MultiFaith Action Coalition.
OG.
OG Strugatz, Serge Contracasta.
Jennifer.
Good morning, Jen Qualick, Office of Supervisor Candace Anderson.
And Stephanie.
Stephanie Tadio. I'm a member of the Racial Justice Coalition, and I'm also a member of NAMI.
Thank you. Stefan.
Good morning, Stephen Griswold here, Office of Supervisor Burgess.
Crawford.
Crawford Carpenter, Crawford Carpenter, CAB member.
Thank you, Crawford. Jill.
Hi there, Jose, Office of Supervisor Shannon.
Christina, did you already introduce yourself?
Not yet. This is Christina Jackson, also with the Office of Reentry and Justice. Good morning.
Thank you. And I know Denise introduced herself. I see two iPhones. Would you like to come up? You introduce yourself?
Yeah, what's up y'all? My name is Jose Cordón, I'm on Impact.
Thank you. And another iPhone. Thank you all for, for joining us this morning, for this special meeting. I will like to open it up for any announcements at this time. Hearing and seeing no announcements, we'll move to public comments. Any items under this jurisdiction, sorry, I'm moving my voice. Any item under this jurisdiction of our job and not on this agenda, we wanna open it up for public comment. Quiet group today. I think we just wanna just jump right into business. All right. Um, let's see. Next, we wanna move it to our presentation from Center for Policing Equity. We'll turn it over to Juanisha.
Thanks, Shayla. Hey, everyone. I'm gonna share my screen. Just give me one moment. The host has it disabled, the screen sharing feature?
It's now enabled.
Thank you. Perfect. Okay. And could I get a thumbs up if you guys can see the presentation?
Juanisha, we can see it, but I do see Cheryl has her hand up.
Yes.
Cheryl.
Sorry, Shayla, I didn't get my hand quickened up before we start this. I, I did have a question about the agenda that I wanted to, to ask. Because, so may I, Chair?
Yes.
And it is about the Truth Act Forum. In the past, we've had an opportunity to speak at the Truth Act Forum, and last year we did not. So I wanted to, to just add that on here somewhere. In conjunction with Sira. I just wanted to, to have a brief discussion on it, somewhere on the agenda.
Excellent. If it's okay, do you think we could discuss that when we get to discussion and review of Sheriff's, Sheriff's Office Quarterly Report? Would that be a good place to, to discuss? Or Patrice, do you think that's a good place to discuss?
What do you think it's a good place to discuss? Which is under net steps and action items, item four. And the next, my understanding is the next Sheriff's Office Quarterly Report will occur in conjunction with the Truth Act Forum. So I think what you flagged Cheryl is perfectly the last bullet of item four.
Okay, thank you. Any other, I'm sorry, any other comments before? I know I was kinda moving fast. Anybody else? Raise hand. Okay.
I will, Shayla, if I, I can do a quick introduction if you want to see before they start.
Yes, yes.
To give a little context. I know that the last time we met, there was a lot of community discussion and dialogue around the, the tax disclosures and the corruption with the Antioch Police Department. And so one of the gaps in information that various committee members discussed was looking at best practice practices and how to bring equity at the policing phase of folks' contact with the criminal legal system. So the Public Defender's Office has been working with the Center for Policing Equity, which were gracious enough to join us this morning. And these are researchers and community members, data scientists that work together to empower vulnerable communities, particularly Black communities, and to partner with leaders all over the country to redesign public safety systems and facilitate innovative, lasting change, and look at best practices. So, so these are the leaders in the field for policing equity and for seeing what works and what doesn't work all over the country, and they have years and years and years of experience. So I'm really grateful they were able to take time to meet us, with us this morning and to give technical assistance to this group, because some of what we heard in the last meeting was folks looking for change and looking for solutions, but both kind of thinking about what role this group can play, and then thinking about overall the community and what the community would like to see in terms of change with the situation that we have in Contracasta. So that's why CPE is here this morning. Sadly, they have a hard stop at eleven, but I know they have some great slides, so I'll, I'll print it back over and just thank them very much for working with us on this.
Thanks so much, Ellen. I'm gonna reshare my screen, and then we could jump right in. Just give me one moment. Okay, can I get a thumbs up if it's now visible again? Thank you. So I do wanna start off again. My name is Juanisha with the Center for Policing Equity. I do wanna say just thank you to the Racial Justice Oversight Body and Community for inviting CPE into this space today. And, you know, we wanna, we wanna acknowledge the pain and trauma that your community has been experiencing due to harmful and unjust policing. I'm gonna go to the next slide. So our presentation today will include an introduction of Center for Policing Equity and also the Triage Response Team. We'll also discuss police reform efforts, and we also discuss strategies for public safety redesign and examples of city and county partnership efforts. Then we'll close and have opportunities for questions at the end of the presentation today. The Center for Policing Equity, we produce analysis identifying the cause of racial disparities in law enforcement. We advocate for large-scale and meaningful change, and we also use evidence-based approaches to social justice. We use data to create levers for social and cultural and policy change. Two lanes of our work are reducing harm within existing public safety systems and redesigning public safety systems that center, safeguard, and empower communities. Two of our sample initiatives that I wanna talk about today, the Justice Navigator is a flagship product that uses policing and administrative data to identify racial inequities and stops in use of force. The Justice Navigator also provides high-level, a high-level review of agency policies and recommendations for changes. The second initiative is the ComStat for Justice product, which is a comprehensive data-driven partnership with policing agencies to reduce racial inequity. Each, it's, each engagement is about three to five years. It includes a mixed methods research, policy reviews, and community engagement to create recommendations that address situational risks that oftentimes lead to racial inequities. So I would like to introduce the Triage Response Team. Our team is a multidisciplinary team. We are research scientists, race and equity experts, community engagement and policy experts, and data virtuosos. We use data to build a more fair and just system. We partner with law enforcement agencies and communities, and our aim, our goal is to bridge the gap in divide of communication, generational mistrust, and suffering. And this is a lovely picture of our team. So the 2020 Black Lives Matter nationwide protest in response to the murders of George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, and Ahmaud Arbery motivated many cities and officials and police chiefs to reach out to CPE to discuss public safety redesign. In 2021, the Triage Response Team was established to expansively respond to these sites and community-specific needs and develop data-driven strategies that shift the focus and resources from systems, systems of punishment to systems of care. TRT consolidates, categorizes, and triages requests that seek to redesign public safety and engage in harm reduction work within policing and local government systems. And we know that redesigning public safety systems takes an out-of-the-box approach and thinking, innovation, and oftentimes experimentation. So TRT is designed to work dynamically by utilizing the mosaic of strengths of our team. Our bespoke services fall broadly into the following categories: research, consulting, and recommendations, community engagement, and project coordination. Our services are offered in light-touch engagements, which usually require one-time commitments or data support, thought partnerships for recommendations to tackle specific problems, or strategic partnerships, which provide a deeper thought partnership and technical assistance around developing processes and structures to tackle various problems. And now I'll pass it over to Leah's.
Thanks, Juanisha, and thanks for that background. We wanted you all to know a bit about us before we jumped into the substance of our, our presentation today. So we know, and you all know, that after a crisis or a traumatic event that involves a police like the one that Antioch is currently facing, there's often an urgency to respond. And so we wanted to discuss today a few common responses and offer some consideration when thinking about those responses. We're specifically going to talk about consent decrees and civilian oversight. And so a consent decree, for those who don't know, is a settlement agreement that's filed in federal court between plaintiffs and the local government agency that's in charge of the police. Consent decrees place a number of mandatory reforms on police agencies. This usually includes training, hiring criteria, promotion criteria, internal review of officers, and sometimes different forms of outside scrutiny. So that could be something like auditing the data that is currently being collected by the department. And these changes typically upgrade police department standards or policies, including policies around use of force, as an example. But one thing to consider is that whether these changes lead to improvements in policing is actually an open question. And that's because the research is actually quite limited. We also know that rewriting policies is often not enough. You need training on those policies, but you also need culture change. And that can include actual enforcement of the policies once they're enacted and accountability for, for those who do not follow the new policy as updated. The city also has to pay oftentimes an hourly fee for court-appointed consultants. And these costs can run in the millions of dollars, and those are funds that could have been invested in the community otherwise. And the focus is often on something that, you know, we refer to at CPE as harm reduction, so reducing the harm that policing is causing rather than redesign, which we've mentioned a few times, and we're going to give some examples of. The challenge with that is that it often removes local control over what's happening. And in the meantime, these, these agreements can go on for many, many years. The reform landscape can change, and new ideas can emerge. And there may not be opportunity because of the agreement to focus elsewhere other than what's in the, the agreement itself. Next slide, please, Juanisha. Thank you. So moving over to civilian oversight, the number of these bodies has increased dramatically since the murder of George Floyd. Several communities have passed measures to establish these boards or to increase the capacity of those that already exist. So some examples include a new review board in Columbus, Ohio, and expansion of the powers of the Oakland Police Commission, which is in your neighborhood, and, and a new oversight board with police, and I'm sorry, with subpoena powers in Portland, Oregon. So there's a wide array of models and structures and a lot of variation in the degree of authority that these bodies have. And at a very high level, what the research tells us is that the effectiveness is you're more, it's more likely to be effective when there is more authority. But again, you're probably going to detect a theme. Research, rigorous research really doesn't exist on civilian oversight and the merits of the different types of models. The research that does exist has had mixed findings about the ability of civilian oversight to reduce things like excessive force and other forms of police misconduct. Boards whose members are appointed by local officials may be biased or susceptible to local politics, or they may be perceived to be that way, which erodes public trust in their independence. But regardless of the oversight model, there are significant structural barriers that often preclude these bodies from fulfilling their mandates, and high public expectations of them are rarely realized. A challenge is often limited resources, particularly for those boards that are dependent on police department or the city council for, for funding. So then the National Association for Civilian Oversight of Law Enforcement, also called NACOL, has identified a few features that are important for these boards. One is independence. Two is adequate funding. Three is access to personnel and records. Ability to influence decision-making, authority to carry out the mandate, and community and stakeholder support, and transparency. Yet even with boards that initially were established in alignment with those characteristics, a lot of these boards often fall short of achieving their goals because of inadequate resources, lack of or shifting political support, and amendments to legislation that established them in the first place. And so questions of resources, roles, authority, and function must be considered very deliberately and very carefully. Next slide. Thank you. So given some of those constraints, we wanted to share about another path forward, what we've called public safety redesign. And this really seeks to move some of the functions that are currently assigned to police, to other organizations, agencies, and community members who may be better equipped to handle them. We have three examples we wanna share with you today. The first two highlight city and county partnerships. We know there's been, you know, some discussion in your group about what can county do when it comes to law enforcement. And so we wanted to share those examples in particular. The first comes from Ithaca, where our team has done some work, Ithaca, New York, that is. The, there is a collaborative process to offer recommendations, which we'll tell you more about. And we're also going to share about Atlanta, where there was a policing alternatives and diversion design team that set up a local pilot. And then finally, we'll talk about Newark, New Jersey, where there's a public safety collaborative, which is engaging in something called data-informed community engagement. Next slide. Thank you. So let's talk a bit more about Ithaca. The first thing to know about Ithaca is that there was a large-scale effort to engage community in a very collaborative process. There were public forums, things like 101 briefings by different officials like the mayor, the police chief, and the sheriff to really level set and make sure that community could understand how things were currently happening. There were also open community talking sessions. Most of this was by Zoom because it was during the pandemic. But it included Q and A with the mayor and the county administrator. There were surveys for community to participate in, and these were made available both online and through paper versions. And all of the findings were summarized on an active website and were printed out and distributed by the library as well. There were also working groups that focused on things like administration, data analysis, research, communications, and law enforcement. And these groups also held town halls and listening sessions of their own. And a data consultant was brought in to analyze 911 and call-for-service data to see why people were requesting help and whether some of those calls could possibly be diverted. There were also focus groups, and these really oversampled community members who were most impacted by burdensome policing, people from Black and Brown communities. And there were also interviews with system actors. And so with support from academic partners, all of, all of this many findings were analyzed and put into reports that were later adopted by both city and county government. And there were nineteen recommendations coming out of this process to reimagine public safety, both in the city of Ithaca and Tompkins County. And these included significant changes in law enforcement, evaluation of alternative response models, a community healing plan, and an additional community engagement plans. More specifically, the city of Ithaca recommended replacing the police department with a community solutions and public safety department that includes both armed and unarmed units. Tompkins County recommended evaluation and implementation of an alternative response model to address crisis intervention and deliver wraparound health and human services. Both the city and the county co-recommended data standardization and transparency mechanisms. They also co-recommended repurposing a SWAT vehicle and conducting an external review of SWAT callouts to see how that vehicle was being used. There was also an implementation process after the, the very in-depth process of creating all of this information. And that has included the creation of a community justice center to lead and complete the work for each recommendation. And that is supported by newly hired staff, paid for by both the city and the county. Moving on to Atlanta. So in 2015, at the prompting of community leaders, a group of community leaders, legal system partners, and elected officials traveled from Atlanta to Seattle to learn more about law enforcement-assisted diversion, also called LEED, you may have heard of it. And Atlanta City Council and Fulton County Board of Commissioners then unanimously voted to establish a local PAD, Police-Assisted Diversion Design Team. The team included representatives from local criminal legal agencies, local governments, neighborhood and faith leaders, and social service providers. And they launched an eighteen-month process to design the local pilot of a diversion and care navigation strategy. So PAD began accepting diversions in October 2017 in four Atlanta Police Department beats, and by 2019 had expanded to twenty-eight beats. And then to better understand why people were calling 911 and to look for more diversion opportunities, PAD analyzed about 3.4 million 911 calls in the Atlanta metro area. They learned that forty-one percent of callers had actually dialed a non-emergency police number in the first place, but then were routed to 911 anyway. So as a result of that finding, they partnered with the non-emergency 311 city services line so to launch a community response services. And this was for quality of life concerns related to mental health, to substance use, or extreme poverty. So this gives people an option that is not 911 to call if they see a concern that requires a non-law enforcement response. And the Fulton County Board of Commissioners also, through this process, adopted a resolution in 2021 to create a diversion center in downtown Atlanta. The initiative is a collaborative effort funded by both the city and the county. And according to the initial plan, the, this diversion center will be an alternative option for law enforcement or emergency responders who are called to address issues like substance use, extreme poverty, mental health crises. And rather than taking individuals to jail, people can be treated or receive assistance at the center. And I'll turn it back to you, Juanisha.
Thank you. Go to the next slide. So I'm gonna talk about Newark. The Newark Public Safety Collaborative is a great example of how communities can use data to co-produce comprehensive and dynamic and effective crime prevention strategies that are tailored to their community. So a public safety collaborative supports efforts to reduce violent crime by using data-informed community engagement, which we refer to as DICE. So DICE is an evidence-based, community-centered approach that empowers communities to co-create equitable public safety strategies through data analysis that is transparent and effective and tailored to the local problems of a community. DICE empowers community organizations to really become co-producers of public safety by mobilizing their community resources and expertise to problem-solve some of Newark's most pressing crime issues. DICE is powered by Risk-Terrain Modeling, RTM, and delivered via RTMDX software. The RTMDX software is used to diagnose crime patterns, identify environmental conditions that could contribute to crime problems, and it also can drive decision-making for public safety. Risk-Terrain Modeling really seeks to reduce crime by focusing on places and not the people in those places. So two examples of what the Newark Public Safety Collaborative was able to establish using the RTM software. using the RTM software is the Newark Community Solutions and South Ward Children's Alliance. So they are engaged in repurposing vacant lots in Newark South Ward based on data analytics from the Newark Public Safety Collaborative. They were able to, the data analytics informed their decision-making and problem-solving efforts at these places. And both organizations collaborated to clean and repurpose vacant lots at the highest, highest risk places in Newark South Ward. And in addition to adding greenery, they added free library boxes, murals and performance stages and were able to repurpose spaces that were once before known as high-risk locations for potential crime and repurposed them for community areas. So this is the closing of our presentation. I am going to stop sharing my screen at this time and then we welcome any questions. Thank you.
I have a question. Do you all have any data as to the results since a lot of these initiatives were started in seventeen, eighteen or twenty? What have been the outcomes as far as crime reduction? The number of cases, if they have been diverted, successful completion, that sort of information?
Yeah, so I can speak to, Rob, I'll pass it to you for Ithaca, but I can speak briefly about Atlanta. One thing that was a really amazing outcome of standing up their PAD program was that they have actually, it's, it sparked conversations around closing their local municipal jail. Because there were, at a point, just a handful of people because they were diverting them to services and the care that they needed. So, so that actually led to conversations around closing the municipal jail. They haven't been able to do that yet because of local politics, but they are figuring that out and they, they did not see any, any increase in crime because of the programming. In fact, they, they feel that people are less likely to come back into the system after they've been able to get the care that they need. And Rob, I'll let you talk about Ithaca.
Yeah, that's a great question because not often are these programs actually evaluated for the impact they produce. I can say in Ithaca, I spent a great deal of time. And i- in that space, one of, one of the major topics, one of the major, one of the major things we sought to do was empower the black community to have a decision-making part in the policy decisions, right? Because that's, that's not a thing. It's usually wealthy white people who are elevated to make policy decisions for everyone and most of those decisions benefit themselves. We empowered the black community to sit at the table and gave them voice in designing this public safety system. And the one thing we saw was the results of the shift of power from, from the wealthy elites to the, to the black community. There was a great deal of pushback politically. And it almost derailed the process, which is getting back on track now. And something I always end with is you can't unempower people, right? So those folks in Ithaca who have been profiled, they've been burdened with overpolicing. They had a chance to sit at the table and have, have a say in policymaking. And although their voices have been tried to and still try to silence them again, you can't unempower people. And they are pushing hard in Ithaca to get this work done. As far as evaluations, there is some actually academic evaluations on risk frame modeling and Newark Public Safety Collaborative. And it had, it has reduced community violence in the area, impacted area in which they've studied from anywhere between thirty to thirty-five percent, we've got an increase in arrests. So, so that program specifically targets places that creates an opportunity for crimes to occur, doesn't target people. So what we need to talk about was vacant lots oftentimes, where a vacant lot and abandoned cars on the same corner create an opportunity for crime. When the vacant lot and the car are abated, they've seen incredible amounts of success in that. We are in the process, Juanisha, is in the process of building out a public safety collaborative in St. Louis. Because St. Louis is a very organized community. And, and we hope to see even better results in St. Louis using that method. I think Juanisha can pull it off.
Thanks, Sarah. And I can actually jump in here and say that with the way the Public Safety Collaborative is run. So I mentioned the Risk Terrain Modeling Software. So communities choose about three to four areas of crime specifically that they want to target. The crime is run into the, the crime data is run into the software pinpointing those areas. And it puts out a monthly analysis. So with Newark specifically, they actually make the analysis public to the community. I can drop the link in the chat, but they make it monthly. They up, they upload the crime data and show the change in percentages. So they do make it public so that the community can follow along and see the changes in rates that they are experiencing drops in violent and property crime on a, at a monthly count level. So I can, I'll drop that link in the chat if anyone wants to check it out.
Gigi?
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I appreciate the presentation and I have all kind of ideas about how we could improve outcomes, especially in Antioch. And, and I don't want to forget, it wasn't just Antioch, it was also Pittsburgh that has officers. So anywhere a large number of African Americans live in, in impoverished areas, you often will have a lot of bad acting police officers. That's just, that's just what has been my experience. So I started thinking about in my role as the executive director at NAMI, who's harmed most? And so any opportunity to look at African Americans who live with mental health challenges would go to the top for me because I know what our criminal justice system looks like with so many people who are impacted by mental health challenges who are criminalized for living with a mental illness. So we got some excited news about the state passing unanimously Excited Delirium, that we won't excuse the behavior of bad officers when they use excessive force and blame the victim. So I'm more policy driven. And so I've been working with the family to try and figure out how could we in this county do away with that excuse for murder, excited delirium and other things that are often used more often on BIPOC communities and mostly African Americans and Latinx communities. And so has there been any work you've done across the nation around specifically around mental health? And really addressing the, the challenges that come up when excessive force is used on individuals who live with mental illness and the black and brown community. Because we get the call that NAMI are getting quite a few increase just because their knowledge about the text messages doesn't mean the behavior subsides.
Yes, I can actually speak to that. I worked on the ComStat for Justice program that I briefly talked about. I'm a part of that program, you know, we partnered with the police department to look at some of the disparities in their data. But one of the things in the community specifically, we partnered with Norfolk, Virginia. And we were seeing that a lot of times, you know, they were having interactions, whether it was mental health, dealing with unhoused populations or substance abuse. And what a goal of the project is to make sure that we have the most relevant actors at the table. So we intentionally involved mental health specialists and mental health organizations in the conversation surrounding redesigning public safety to see what those organization pain points were and how they were interacting with police in the communities that they specifically serve. So as we talked about, you know, giving a seat at the table to those who are most impacted is always a priority, but just specifically because I worked on that program. That was something that I was tasked with doing, going out in the community, finding the organizations that are serving those that are impacted by mental illness and making sure that our responses are reflective of the needs of these particular individuals. So that is work that we prioritize and that we do when we engage with cities.
Real quick, we are also helping the city of St. Louis set up, first of all, let me say thank you for your work at NAMI. What, what a great organization and, and really caring people. We're working in St. Louis to help them set up an alternative response program. They, like most cities, they went to a co-response, a police officer and a clinician. And, and now we're helping them get to a place where they don't dispatch police, it's just a clinician. And also I'm, I'm trying to get into their head every chance I can to tell them that you have to go one step further in, in which you provide access to healthcare, access to services to people to help them manage their disease. So they actually don't have to call nine one one and don't ever go into crisis again. And I think that's a big step that most people forget. They respond to the crisis instead of going one step past that and really help people manage their disease and how that disease manifests. And I think if we can get to that, we're going to see huge reductions. Huge reductions. If people, people just need help managing their disease.
Thank you. Well then.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. A couple of questions came up for me. You mentioned like in Ithaca that there was a lot of community engagement, but the local politics in that area was basically trying, well, it was your words, but basically trying to kill the process of what it's sound like. So I guess I was just wondering if, first question, could you just expand, like if you're not having political willpower from a local agency to look in some of these policy directions, what does that work look like? Interfacing with the community and building community partnerships? And the second question is, you mentioned that some advisory boards would be creator or came together, especially after John Floyd, George Floyd and Breonna Taylor being killed, but sometimes the effectiveness was based on the resources that a board would have. So I guess what is your definition of adequate resources to make an advisory board that much more effective? If you could summarize the answers to that.
Rob, do you want to take the first one on Ithaca?
I'm, I'm sorry, what was, can you, can you hit me up with the Ithaca question again?
Basically, you said there wasn't like political willpower to move some of these recommendations forward, but the community was still empowered to do something to push for these policies and practices. So the question is, is like if you're running into a roadblock where the local decision makers refuse to entertain these ideas, how does that work? Transfer, what does a collaboration look like along with interfacing with the local and just agency for, in y'all's experience?
So in Ithaca, we had a champion for the policy change in the mayor's office who towards the end of the process resigned his position and a more Laura was, Laura is a wonderful person. She just didn't have the drive and the self-efficacy that the, the former mayor had. She wasn't the champion, quite the champion that Savante was. So we, the, the mayor got us to a point, then there was a change in leadership. Fortunately, one of our theories of change involves finding a strong champion for the cause, a, a policy entrepreneur that can actually drive the change in, inside government. So we'll look really hard and find that person. And at the same time, we ground our work in the community. So the community can hold, we don't ground it, we center all of our work in the community, not just overall community, the black and brown community that actually experienced this burden of policing. And, and they will, and our theory is they will hold the government accountable to any changes that, that come up or are recommended. And that's worked really well. The one thing that we've changed a little bit is who represents community. In Ithaca, we used individual people stepped up and they wanted to be part of the process. And, and those black people who stepped up, we found some of them were re-traumatized by being in this space and being in the same space with police officers that created their trauma. And they fell out of the process. And so we actually regrouped. And in our next, in our next project, we use community advocates. So people who represent larger groups instead of individual community members. And we think that worked just a little better. At least I felt better. We weren't re-traumatizing people. And we didn't see people fall out of the process. So that's, that's a lesson we learned the hard way. I, I, I still talk to some of the community members, they call me, and from Ithaca. And that's, that really, it stung, it stung a lot.
And then on the question about the oversight boards and kind of what does resource, like what does sufficiently resource mean? There's definitely local context, so it's hard to say from place to place. But I think two things that would be important to think about are dedicated staffing. So to make sure that you have people who that is their job to lead the board and that they aren't just, you know, volunteering because they care a lot, which is also important. But, you know, making sure that you have staff, someone to staff it and keep it, keep the work moving as well as a budget specific for that body so that they're not dependent on another organization or entity to, to provide resources. And, and political support is also important to think about because, you know, political winds can change. And then there may not be that support. So thinking about consistency and sustainability and making sure that the body is independent and can continue to exist regardless of what else might be happening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gigi.
I have another question. Just because of the blatant racism in this county and working with closely with the African American community, we've started a process called Forty Voices to get an African American holistic wellness hub. So that when issues come up, the pain that's experienced could be absorbed through healing centers throughout the county. Do you have any thoughts on some of the ingredients that should be included in that and how we would fight for the funding to make sure that that happens? Because at every angle, whether it's criminal justice, we just came out of COVID, African Americans suffered most in mental health, African Americans suffer most in juvenile hall, African Americans are represented there more. So sometimes it makes more sense to just do it yourself than rely on systems that are designed to do exactly what they have been doing, which is calming the community. Have you given any thought to that on a higher level? I mean, of course, after what happened with Antioch, I went all over trying to get funding, like let's get in there now and let's, let's try and start a healing process. And everywhere I went, where they have stored dollars, there was no funds available to start that process. So had we had that in place, we could have started doing some of the work. I do want to give a really big shout out to Alan, who came to each one of our healing sessions alone with Brandon and gave great comfort, especially to the young people who, who, who wanted to have their answers to start the healing process. Some people are still stuck. So I understand, you know, the trauma that comes up, but there's many of us who, who, who want to, we heal from helping others and so we won't be traumatized or we won't be fearful in none way. But I think African American holistic wellness hub is part of the answer. Any thoughts from you all?
First of all, I love that idea. Because it's, it's needed. In, in Ithaca, we're, they actually kept our healing plan. We, we, there was a healing plan in there. We brought a specialist in, Dr. Acosta. And he was on the ground, speaking to people, having circles. And the big plan was to have circles for the community, circles for law enforcement. And the long-range plan was try to bring them together in a facilitated circle and try to heal together. I don't know if they're there yet. I, I know they're not there yet. I'm not sure if they'll ever get there. But that was the long-range plan. And I, I'm a big believer in, in healing and really hearing people's truths. And I think it's got to be a big part of this process. And it's overlooked a lot because I, I don't know if people don't believe that the black community has suffered trauma. Or I, I, I don't know why it's overlooked so much, other than just the blatant racism. And the system is designed to traumatize black people in, in order to keep the status quo. And, and here, I, I don't want to sound like I'm, I'm giving a lecture again because you all know, you know that, you've lived that. And funding is always tough or something like that. It's not a priority for the government. Uh, and funding is always tough or something like that. It's not a priority for the government, right? It's so, it, it's back to that status quo conversation. But it, it's a big part. We include it in the Ithaca plan. And and I think that it can make a huge difference.
Yeah, um, the only thing I would add is that, again, um, as Rob mentioned, funding is truly a tough one. Um, that's a question that we get a lot when we are talking to cities about redesigning public safety, especially with response to mental health. Um, I know it goes without saying, but trying to go to your local officials, because there is a lot of funding opportunities and oftentimes at the end of the fiscal year, there is money available that people don't know about unless you go and ask. And I mean, I'm not saying, you know, sit outside the door and wait on someone, because sometimes it's kind of off putting. But hey, sometimes you have to go very grassroots to get, you know, the answers that you need. But also, if you haven't thought about looking um, at the federal level for funding, I know SAMSA often has micro grants and micro opportunities for funding that are particularly related to mental health. And also, um, maybe going to some of the organizations that are already offering mental health services and partnering with them to fund a portion of your initiative and receiving small funding sources from those organizations that have additional funds. I've seen that work um, locally to me and my community before. So sometimes when you have mental health authorities, they're called different things in different places. But they are often given funds that they can use for smaller initiatives. So if you have your healing um, initiative that you want to do, if it's like set up as a five oh one C three, that would be a way to go as well, to go to local mental health organizations. And again, I hope that's helpful. Federal funding is always super scary, but SAMSA is a really good one. And they have a lot um, of opportunities.
Yeah, we just applied for their fifty thousand. Thank you, Juanisha. We also went to this county that's had a difficult time hiring staff for our A three program. So we know they're selling, saving, but there's no desire to, uh, to funding. Thanks.
Thank you.
And I have a question for um, the Rob Liz, Juanisha. In terms of looking at the common police reform efforts, you talked a little about consent decrees and some of the challenges. You've seen with consent decrees. Are there any of these agencies that you studied, um, perhaps the track they took in Newark for um, reforming or shifting when they have a really substantial portion? For example, in Antioch, nearly half of officers are, are participating and involved in these tax messages or that FBI investigation or other um, pieces of, of racism and misconduct or corruption. So are there models that you see that are promising in best practice? Again, when you have, um, you know, a chief right now in, in a police agency locally with a, a, a large swath of staff that were engaged in something like this?
I think I would point to Camden, New Jersey, in which the entire police department was they did away with the entire police department and they built it from scratch. That's how bad things are. Um, and I don't think it was as bad as Antioch. Um, right? So they, everyone had to reapply for their positions. They brought in Ann Milgram, who was currently the, the um, head of DEA. And she, she, she's a civil rights attorney and she was the acting police chief. As they rebuilt the Camden Police Department. It's a very interesting case study. Getting that is going to be, it's really unusual. As New, as you know, New Jersey Attorney General Office has a great deal of influence over the day-to-day operations of police departments. I, 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 I guess you can't do that everywhere. However, we like to lean on, it's more important to change behaviors than hearts and minds. Right? Hold people accountable. And hopefully, when you can change behaviors, hearts and minds will follow. Uh, but it's that accountability portion that's often left out of police departments. That low level, street level accountability is the most important. And I see a lot of, I, I saw a bill on canine usage in California. Um, that wouldn't be a problem if low level police first level sergeants were actually holding their people accountable. You would never get to the point where they, they were trying to make use of a canine dog illegal. Uh, so I always come back to accountability for, for any of these problems. If, if people were doing their jobs correctly, um, you, you would have far less, far less problems.
Thank you. And are there any um, bills that CPE has looked at in California recently? I know someone on your team mentioned supporting a bill that would help reduce racial disparities in, in traffic stops.
Yeah, we did sign on that bill. Uh, I, I think someone testified in Sacramento. We just, we're working on this same, similar bill in Connecticut and New York with, with a coalition of community groups all around those low-level traffic stops. And I think that's a great place to start because so many low-level traffic stops are what uh, police call fishing expeditions. Right? They, they, they have no intention of writing someone a ticket for air freshener hanger from their rearview mirror. All their intention is to stop that person and get consent to search their car. Uh, and our data, we have the largest database on police behaviors in the world. And most of our data, our data is clear that uh, black people are searched at extremely high rates. It, it pedestrian stops and vehicle stops. However, uh, elements of a crime are found at such low levels compared to when police search white people, which we like to say is the level of suspicion for pulling over a black person and searching the black person is so much lower than it is for white people. Um, so it, those, those uh, those bills around pretextual stops are so important. Uh, the Commonwealth of Virginia has, has statewide ban on pretext stops, Philadelphia, Berkeley and LA, I think, are the big ones that rolled it out. And crime's not running rampant. Right? It, it's, vehicle accidents have not gone up because it, so little of that involves safety. It's all about pulling black people over and searching their cars in search of finding some element of a crime, which most of the time is not there.
Thank you, everyone, for having us today. Um, we do have another meeting that we're gonna hop for. But I will, well, Ellen has our contact info, but I'll just quickly put my email address in the chat. If anything else comes up, any more questions that you can think of, just feel free to email me directly and I'll put it in the chat really quickly.
Thank you so much, Juanisha and Liz and Rob for presenting today. We really appreciate you and your work.
Thank you all for having us. You guys have an amazing rest of the day. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright. Um, I know we did queue at a, um, should we open it up for public comment at this time? I'm not sure.
Yes.
Thanks for trying. Newbie here, I'm getting it together. I'm trying to like rethink how this thing go. Um, so at this time, we'll open it up for public comment. Oh, Gigi?
Just because, um, what's unfortunate in Antioch, I participated in Reimagine Antioch and it's was already a plan for some, um, police accountability efforts through a commission. But the individuals have to go through the mayor for appointment now because of what's happening. All of his attention has been taken on, uh, appointing. But would it make sense for the mayor to be the person? If they're so connected with the police? But how would a, how would a, uh, independent body launch such an effort? And then pick people who are not compromised by having a relationship with mayor? I mean, that's kind of like.
That's the point. One of their considerations of it was the political influence that could be presented depending on how that board is.
I'm not, I'm not a party for opposition. I would never be appointed, but.
Well, I mean, just in response to that, because every city has a different method to their madness and how they go about their process. And a lot of the times, just putting on the organizer hat, it's like if the city or local agency doesn't recognize it, then it unfortunately becomes incumbent and responsibility of advocates and community members to like create that meeting where they are talking about these hard things and then constantly pushing against the public process and you wouldn't appoint us, but we've been meeting anyway, talking about this and here's what we got. And just continually creating that public process and push until it's like, okay, yeah, let's get something more officially established in the city. So if the mayor isn't doing it, then it's gonna be like one of those things like, okay, we'll, we'll meet anyway. We'll get back to you when we have a plan put together and just keep on pushing.
Yeah, I think that showed up. And I mean, it showed up in Richmond because there were two separate. Yeah, I mean, you, I know you were part of that process, but there were kind of two separate groups. So there was kind of this first group of Reimagine Richmond. Well, I don't even know what they were called, but
That.
That first group of Reimagine Richmond, then kind of a second group, uh, that was appointed by different people. And, um, you know, I think there were some bumps and, you know, things that happened. But I do think they were trying to figure out ways how they can work with each other because the separate group could act in a different way, right? Um, and not have certain, like the Brown acted things, kind of, um, guard them. And I think also with this group as well, because it started off with the Racial Justice Coalition. Um, and then there's this body and Racial Justice Coalition still meets and shows up to these different meetings and things. So, um, yeah, I think there's like this inside-outside kind of planning that needs to happen.
I see. Cheryl and then Doug.
I I always uh, give pause to these conversations about pretextual stops. Because pretextual stops tend to give a an air that the officers don't know why they're stopping someone in the first place. That they are, you know, they, 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 uh, you know, I, I, I guess a legal reason is that it's a stop, it's for some sole purpose of, of, you know, some unrelated investigation. They know why they're stopping people. They know why they're stopping them. They know that he's a, is a black or brown um, person or person that's, it's, they want to stop for some, for some nefarious reason. And that is serving some purpose other than some official legal reason. So it's not a pretextual stop. It's an actual illegal reason for stopping. So saying, so I think it's, you know, this whole conversation about trying to change someone who's been trained from the very outset to conduct these stops is, is, um, is missing the whole point of what we're trying to do. That happens in training. That happens from the very outset. So that is where we are trying to, you know, this whole thing about reimagine and re, re-change. You can't change something until you get in there and tell them it's illegal. We, we can name it anything we want to. We can give him all kind of pretty words and throw some of these pink flowers from my background on it. It doesn't change the fact that it's illegal. And so I think the one thing that I grabbed out of this presentation is the thing about accountability. If it doesn't have any teeth to it, all of these rules and laws that we keep throwing at, um, not just officers, but everybody in the criminal legal system. If it doesn't have any consequences, not just accountability. Because accountability is nothing if there's no consequences to the actions, then what are we doing? So what I want to do, especially with this body, is what are the consequences that we're recommending? That you can't just keep hemming people up, stopping them and ruining their lives. Because the, there, there's something that you've been told that a certain person who looks a certain way deserves to be treated a certain way. That's what this is supposed to be doing. And so that's the conversation I would like for us to have and the recommendations I would like for us to make. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Sheila. Um, I just want to thank the Racial Justice Oversight Body for arranging for this presentation. Uh, to have this um, uh, uh, opportunity for this board to think about and study the possibility of, um, what this, the presenter's called uh, public safety redesign, to think about that in our county. Um, and the possibility of having our cities consider that, including Antioch, but not limited to Antioch, consider such a thing as well. Uh, so that's very positive. And um, I, I look forward to the Racial Justice Oversight Body pursuing uh, considerations of this kind beyond just this, this presentation. The emphasis on, um, the need for cultural change in our um, law enforcement is very important. And um, I think that's something that we need to work on. Thank you.
Any more public comments in the room? Um, next we want to move to item four on the agenda.
I think Chris had his hand up.
Oh, sorry.
No, 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 you, you, there, no apology necessary. I was, I was trying to navigate my screen to turn off my mute and it took long.
You know, I'm, I move fast, I move fast. I'm like.
You, you are a, a great facilitator. You're doing a great job. Thank you for, for stepping up in this role. Um, you know, two, two, two co-chairs, two chairs right now. Uh, you two chairs, but you got you a few on. So I just wanted to, you know, I, I, I think I'm probably gonna segue into where you were going next anyway. I think the two items are connected because I think one of the ways, you know, that we have, um, you know, an opportunity to, to begin to, um, you know, at least make public uh, some level of recommendation or push um, in response to this is with the public statement. But before even, um, you know, moving on to, to that, just to say, uh, I appreciate everything that all of you shared. Uh, I, I think, you know, with a lot of revision here in, you know, the next several minutes, uh, we could probably incorporate a lot of the ideas that you guys said in some way or another, or at least allude to them in that. Um, and then, you know, further support that by showing up to the spaces where this, um, you know, where this statement will be received uh, to give, you know, context and to further flesh out, you know, what some of the asks are. Uh, but I would also say, you know, in, in terms of that cultural shift, I think that's extremely important. Uh, I think all the things that, uh, all of you guys have raised here within the last fifteen minutes or so are all, you know, the right things and are very important. Um, I, I think for me, the thing is cultural shift, which is, you know, so much of this is the most difficult thing to mandate or to even measure or to, you know what I mean, to, to, to make happen, right? It, it's one of the things that requires, I think, a lot more uh, exposure to the concepts and the ideas as much as possible and patience. But it's hard to say, we are going to change culture in the local, um, you know, police department by thirty percent by the end of twenty twenty-five. Because it's like, how do you even measure what would twenty, you know what I mean? Like what, so it's so nebulous uh, that there's, there's just a need to, to think uh, outside of the box, to be very creative and to attack it from as many different entry points as possible, as many different ways uh, as we can think about. Um, you know, just sort of making sure that, that folks are being inclusive uh, and acknowledge uh, the suffering. uh and acknowledge uh the suffering that has been caused um, you know, to understand history and history's impact on even the way that we see race uh in this kind, all of these different things, right? It would take all of that and then any number of things um, you know, that I'm not even, you know, aware of or thinking about that you guys um, you know, could probably think of and bring to the table to get to that place. Um so it it's something that can be done over time, but it takes, it it's it's, it will take a lot of persistence and it'll take a lot of creativity and just continuing to uh to monitor and look at it and 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 update uh even what the approaches are uh as we see uh certain results. So just wanted to name that uh and then um you know, if there's nothing further, I'm ready to uh to sort of jump into the um the statement. So hopefully you all got a got a chance to to look at um the the drafts in the agenda um in advance. Because I think um, you know, I I started with the draft. Uh there's been some revision um. You know, which is the revised version is what you see, but for those of you who have who have not uh done something like this, at least um in this space before or with me, uh I always find it worthwhile to say like, I'm not married to the language here, like the the point of this is not to show you something that is about to, you know, uh that has to look like this and is going forward, but it is for you to look at it. Um you know, and just for the for this to be a starting place for you to say, okay, we need these revisions or I need, we need to take this out, we need to add this because this is your document, right? This is meant to be reflective and representative of uh your thoughts, um feelings, needs and your response to this uh particular crisis uh and how you would like to see things move forward. And so you need to be heard on it, right? And so that's that's the point. So don't feel married to the languages here. Uh take every opportunity that you need uh in reading it. If you feel like, you know, there's a, there's a literal or figurative I that needs to be dotted or T that needs to be crossed. Um you know, that that's what this time is for, is to engage in doing that. Um and, okay. I was I was gonna do it, but it's it is all, go for it, Christina. Uh I think it's page. Yeah, you got it. Um. Is everybody able to see that? Like, and when I say see it, I mean, read it particularly for those of you who are virtual. Is that big enough? Do you need us to zoom any? Yeah, there there's kind of.
For those in the room who need a copy, we do have a couple of digital packages.
Gigi has her hand out.
Okay.
Yeah, does anybody on the board have one?
Yeah, right.
Okay, great. There you go. You're welcome.
As I, as I mentioned earlier, it's not just that Antioch Police Department, not just several. It's like maybe more than a third of the course, maybe even half of the course. So I think be more specific about Antioch and Pittsburgh with Antioch having so many of their um officers being implicated in this with. And and I feel comfortable with saying, and we don't know where else in the in the county to test. Usually if you see one crack, there's many more running around. You don't see, and I don't pretend to think that they, you know, they look at city boundaries and say, I'm not going over into this city or that city. So in that first opening statement, I think if we said something about we condone it anywhere and we're aware that it's happened in Antioch with a vast majority where we have their officers and in Pittsburgh. Hopefully people are agreeable about that.
Yeah, I I don't think you mentioned Antioch in particular. It just said in the county.
Maybe I'm looking at the wrong.
It's it's at the bottom, the last line in the first paragraph.
Oh, okay. I think I think I caught most of that. Uh they got a little uh audio got a little little muddled there toward the end, but I I so I will I will ask uh for like some clarifying questions here, because what I wanna make sure I'm doing is um, you know, sort of changing language to some degree, uh maybe even in real time. Um we don't, we don't wanna have to uh have, you know, ideally, we wouldn't have to have another meeting, you know, to, you know, we'd be able to get this done. Um and that's not I I'm not intending to rush you guys in terms of thinking about it. I'm saying if we can come to an agreement, it would be nice to be able to move this to the next step as opposed to needing another month or more to come back and talk about it. So um specifically in that last sentence, right? Instead of, so one of the things I heard is instead of saying several, maybe there's a a another word that better encompasses that this was a large portion of. Uh right, several sounds like more than a few, right? As opposed to like a a large amount. Um and so in terms of words or phrases that we could put in there instead of several, right? Um I I'm open to suggestions. I mean, the first thing that comes to mind is is multiple or many, something like that. Um but Gigi uh in particular, because you raised it and certainly is open to everyone else, um you know, wondering how either of those words or or some other phrase would land on you.
More than a third of their police department.
Yeah.
There were, by our review of the text messages, there were forty-four officers um on or participating in some way in the text messages. Those were the need number needs that we got. I know the DA's office is here too. Yeah, happy to have them there.
The report can indicate um, and I think some of these reports, it said twenty percent have been placed on leave and then of the forty percent may have been implicated with touching and with sending and receiving. So I think if um a suggestion that I would offer is it may not get to the quantity that you were thinking, but I think you could say involving officers of the Antioch Police Department and Pittsburgh Police Department.
Um. Can't you just say that East County, I I helped write a press release for our central committee out in in um our DP triple C, and we did do exactly with that. We we named Antioch and Pittsburgh and it just said officers. It took out the word several. It said officers of the Antioch in Pittsburgh. It didn't say several at all.
Melbourne has had. I mean, any amount is a lot.
I mean, that's the word that came up for me too, was saying a significant number of officers in Antioch and Pittsburgh are tied to this. Um in general, I'm okay with going with the will of the group and modifying this to make it more punchy, but the thing that was missing for me personally was not just the racist text messages, those that came out about actually falsifying evidence against community members who are primarily bracket black and brown, like racism is one thing, but you took an action outside of that to go as far as you can to ruin somebody's life. And that, I believe, needs to be named because that also just decimates the public trust of me. It's like, I can't even trust that you're gonna go about your job ethically when I'm standing in front of you.
Right. So uh thank you, Melvin, because that's exactly where I was going to go next, is to that it should say something about where it says racist. It it was racist, sexist, xenophobic, homophobic and unethical. I know there was more, but I think if you're gonna call it out, call it out.
Same.
Okay, uh so Melvin, here's a, here's a question for you.
Melissa Russell.
Who you just spoke, Melvin, who was who who was just.
Melissa.
Melvin.
Um, you know, well played. Uh so in the in the second, in the second paragraph, uh the third sentence.
Okay.
We we know that these were not just meaningless words between officers, but are indicative of racial bias and animus, which has far reaching implications as to how these officers perform their duties and may well have directly impacted the disparate outcomes for communities of color, which this body was assembled to address. Uh do you feel like we need stronger language in addition to that, or that you'd like to move this sentence? Or does the sentence kind of get at uh the idea that you were putting forward um or need modification in any way?
I mean, I guess that's a general overview. I think the only thing that I would eliminate is may well and just say and have had a direct impact on disparate outcomes for our communities of color, which this body was assembled to address because they have had impacts, not may well have, but that's just me personally, because being more direct about the impact that has happened.
And to Cheryl's point, um just wanted to add all of the all of the words that you threw out. Um or at least, you know, making sure that we're all, we're all good with that revision.
Can we also, I have to go to another meeting.
Uh that's happening in Antioch and Pittsburgh, you may have gone off, but it it does break up fear that it's much more widespread. We're we're just aware of those two, but if we're condemning it, we're condemning it for everywhere in the county. So some way of saying that it although it was identified there, there's a belief carried by some community members that it's everywhere. We wanna condemn no matter where it may be found in this county.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Okay, um so to that point.
So I I.
Go for it.
So I uh I I'm reading both the press release and this right here. So I'm the racial justice, this capacity hardworking for this. Um I I I get the profoundly disheartened, but I wanna use strong language about the condemnation and the um and the and to say something about how vehemently we decree um that's, you know, the actions and I I recent news of the races, you already, are you editing this in in real time?
I I'm doing my best.
We can't see it. That's why I'm asking.
I know, I know.
Um and actions of their officers strongly condemn this behavior in any form but most especially among law enforcement agencies. I would say something here to to Gigi's point um in any area.
Right, okay. So to that point, um cuz yeah, uh okay. So if you look at the, if you look at the third paragraph, because I think it it and we can move these sentences, like I don't, I don't care where they are. I just think um if something, if something's already there, then maybe we can add it, you know, where it flows. So there's this, you know, we also believe it's important to state in first sentence and third paragraph that this incident only confirms the often unacknowledged complaints, allegations and suffering of black and brown community members who are fully aware of the existence of such blatant racism uh based on their experiences, but whom so often do not have the evidence to prove it. So it feels like right there would be the optimum place to say, this may not even, you know, this is um, you know, in in terms of Pittsburgh and Antioch, this is where that evidence has has been made public. Uh but there may even be, you know, more or, you know, perhaps that that kind of captures the spirit of what it is that you're trying to say. Um so thought about.
Yeah, Chris, but if you say that, then you say who do not have the evidence to prove it or have such evidence ignored. Because the I don't think it's always necessarily true that they don't have the evidence to prove it is ignored, because what they did was they they actually um invented evidence or they suppressed evidence.
Right. So so what if, so what if instead of uh often unacknowledged, we say often ignored uh allegations and stuff?
There you go.
Okay, um.
Um and are we saying anything in here? Uh I didn't see it, but I I did want to make sure we made mention of uh decreeing the officers who were involved in the ongoing corruption investigations of alleged fraud, bribery, drug distribution and civil rights violations that are related to the use of force. Which is separate from the text messaging.
Right. Okay.
Do you want me to send it to you?
I was just gonna say, you know, uh so adding some uh, you know, some of these uh additions in the chat.
I can, I can send you. I have it. I'll type it up really fast.
Yeah, you can. You can just type it in the chat. That way everybody can see it in case there's any any further uh, you know, edits or thoughts that need to be shared and then we can just put it right in there.
Absolutely.
And that that also makes it, you know, relatively uh quick so that we can keep it moving. I I really would, uh, I mean, I want this to be right more so than I want it to be fast, but I also don't want us to take, you know, I don't want us to have to call another meeting to to kind of get to the place where it actually can move forward.
Oh, we only have this Q and A thing?
Yeah, um but I I I think we all should still be able to see any anything you put in there, just like it is a regular chat. In the in the meantime, uh if there are, if there are any other thoughts or if there's additional feedback, by all means, please uh you know, please give it to us.
Well, I'll just say thank you for wrapping up the letter and also doing some real time editing, because I know that's extensive. So I don't have anything to add personally, just a thank you, Chris.
Li- literally, you know, part of my job. So there's no, no need to thank me and it doesn't matter how extensive it is. Uh the again, the point is to to reflect the things that you guys want to say, um you know, and try to do so without being redundant, which is why you know, as sometimes you you mention things, if it's if it's there maybe in some form, it could be edited. I just wanna make sure to point that out to you guys, but again, not opposed to adding or taking out anything uh based on, you know, what you guys have to say and um I will also just point out, right, that we we do still have, you know, members of the public who, you know, may wanna be heard as well. Um you know, when that time comes. So as we, you know, continue to ask members of the body to give feedback, you know, as that feedback, you know, sort of uh wraps, um just to remember to uh to open it up for for public comment as well.
We can actually do that now. We don't have any other members um have any other suggestions. We can open it up for public comment right now uh while Cheryl is putting things in the chat. So do we have any public comment from non-board members? Don't see any hand raised on my end. Anybody in the room?
No.
Okay, perfect. And I do see this as a voting item, so we'll wait for the edits to be made. Chris, will you be? Oh, I see Stephanie has her hand up.
I just, you know, just real, the general comments is just a member of the of the public. I I I just think really, I in the letter, you know, I think the letter is amazing. I read it twice last night and um I I I do think it should be a little bit more specific about what what has occurred in Antioch with the number of officers. Um I think also just where it's appropriate stressing um the harm and the harm that's been done and from. and the harm that's been done and from people that you've directly heard from or people you haven't heard from. Um, you know, I think the youth in, in, in Antioch, the young people in school, they're, I, I've attended a listening session. I mean, they're, they're scared. They're downright scared of the police. And I don't know how that would be worked in, um, and I guess also just, um, just the total break in trust. I mean, the very entity that, and I've said this before, that's supposed to protect and serve is doing just the opposite. And, um, I don't, I just, I think that really needs to be stressed. Um, because I think that's what, I think in societies, that's where there's a disconnect. I mean, some people view the police as, as, as protecting them and other people see the police as the, as the very, the first line of harm. And those traffic stops, I think are a very, very vivid, clear example. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and I, I do just want to thank everyone for all the, the work that they're doing. It's, I, this is, it's not easy.
Quickly thanks Stephanie for giving a donation to supply the pizzas for us when we had the conversation with the police chief and the youth, which we had to get the funding from a private citizen. Thank you, Stephanie.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
In response to that comment, I have some language that we, our office had drafted for letters that we've sent that I'm happy to uh, pair it in, Chris, if you think it's helpful. So initially we talked about the reports revealing a deeply entrenched department-wide culture of racism, homophobia, targeted violence against black people, selective enforcement of laws against black people, fabrication of evidence, and utter disregard of civil and human rights. And then in terms of the number of officers involved, um, there were forty-five APD officers. There are officers that are not on APD on those texts, by the way, and the texts are redacted and we still don't have all of the texts. But from what we know right now, there were forty-four Antioch Police Department officers on the text chains disclosed thus far. There are officers that run the gamut from patrol officers to lieutenants. Um, there are, there is the president of the Antioch Police Officers Association and Antioch Police Department Sergeant, Internal Affairs Sergeant, um, and if you, if you look based on the Antioch Police Department website, at least sixteen of the forty-four officers are in leadership roles at Antioch, such as detective, sergeant or lieutenant. So th- those were just some of the, um, facts that we dissected when we kind of pulled out the initial texts. Initially, we had forty-five names, but one officer has two different last names or same last name and two different first names. And we've since been informed it was one person, not two people. So I don't know if the DA's office has any other facts to add to the kind of, um, breakdown of the officers from the information they can share.
Any other thoughts on that language? Sounds good to me. Just a matter of, uh, where to place it, but um, yeah, I would love to include some of, some of the, the language that you used. Alan, thank you.
Hey, Chris, this is Christina. I just want to double check to see if you can see what's in the Q and A box that, um,
I can.
Provided. Okay, great, thanks.
And I cannot copy it, uh, you know, directly, so I am, you know, switching back and forth to, you know, type a few words at a time, but I got it.
I forgot the number of officers in Antioch that, uh, were actually active. Was it ninety?
At the time that we, um, had the forty-four names, there were ninety-nine officers in Antioch. I think there were more allocated positions, but at the time of the text, I know that's a real moving target because um, a lot of folks are.
Already subbed by twenty percent of the force who was already on administrative leave for other issues, right?
Yeah, we've had a lot of difficulty getting information about who's actually on leave. That's one of the things I've continually requested, but I know there are certainly a a, a larger number of officers on leave.
Yeah, so I was just thinking, you know, that's basically half your whole police force, which, um, leaves you right now pretty undressed to, to say, you know, kind of like, or unprepared or un, you know, staffed. Uh, so you know, you got a city that's operating at half capacity, which had already had issues, uh, uh, serving the public in a safety, public safety, uh, you know, realm. Uh, it's just incredible and, and they're getting paid. So you pay them not to be there. It's incredible, you know, so you know, you just compounded by compound, like, you know, it's, it's, it's this mind blowing. Being paid. The investigation.
Didn't the, uh, I forget his name, the responder for the, didn't he say it was the worst that he's identified in the nation? Yeah, I think, I think we have to remind you, this is not a small thing. It's never happened before anywhere else. It's the worst act of police corruption ever in the nation that's been reported. I, I wouldn't have a problem with that being.
Hear you loud and clear. Okay, um, so this is gonna take me a few more minutes, if not longer, to, to get this all down. Um, what I might recommend is if there's, uh, any additional conversation that we could have or another agenda item that maybe we could move to and then come back toward the end of this meeting. I could try to, um, you know, reflect back to you guys what you have said and maybe share the screen and show you uh, the new language in real time, uh, and maybe, you know, there's time for a vote in like, you know, eight to ten minutes. Um, if not, um, then, you know, we can, uh, if, if, if everybody hasn't been heard, certainly I invite, uh, the conversation to continue, but as I'm hearing the, uh, the talk slow down and I think the chat is, well.
That's it. I mean, it only, it only lets me give you a little bit at a time, so.
Yeah.
Let me, let me try and email you, Chris.
Okay.
I can, I can put it all in an email. It might be quicker to you.
So yeah, I guess while Chris is, is, uh, updating and editing the document, we can, we can move to the next item, which is to discuss hosting community listening sessions and healing circles. You know, I'm not sure who's taking lead on that discussion, but.
Well, Sarah, I'll share that we've held several as well as, uh, I think, um, a couple of other organizations have done some work out there, but it's hard to do without the funding to do it. I can't go on to private citizens and say enrich in your pocket to do this.
It's the inventory overstock seller, that lazy boy.
This is a fundraiser for a lazy boy.
And I think that each of the have been very effective because they brought, you know, some kind of healing and some hope, especially having, um, the evacuated attended one and then, um, the public defenders, because people want answers, like who, who's looking out for us as we're suffering in, in this city and wondering. And so when they present it, they presented information that helped equip people to better understand. But I go and I talk to people and some people are saying they're not doing anything because they weren't there, so I would like us to have a plan as was suggested earlier, where I was gonna have a robust healing, um, effort for the city, the Antioch specifically, but also Pittsburgh and anywhere else for people. I use a definition of when I'm looking for, for people play, work, live, work, play or pray. And a lot of people come into Antioch to also pray and play. And so, um, it's impacting the whole community. I can't imagine living in this county and hearing about it and not having a negative response to it, especially if you have heart.
I'll just speak then, um, if, uh, I, I know just being a part of some Zoom conversations and just listening to all the stories that have happened since this has come up. One thing that I've identified is a lot of people feel very isolated with these issues until there's a major event that comes out, which also just has a vast impact on everybody's mental health and how safe you even feel in the community. So my suggestion is, is like, I think a healing, s- listening session and healing circle is great, but my concern is I don't want it to be one of those things that's kind of a one-off, like making sure that we have like some sort of like community partnership and organizations there that are engaging with folks that are listening, because one concern that I have heard time and time again, since this whole scandal was brought to light, is folks saying that we don't want this to be one of those moments that fizzle out like that has happened with George Floyd or Breonna Taylor or anybody else who was unarmed and killed by the police, that, you know, both, there's like this spark and outrage and then people just act like things are back to normal. So making sure that folks who are dealing with this trauma, that there is that community partnership that's still engaging them and interacting with them and working with community members. So it's not, hey, we showed up for two hours for an event. Back to my life, all the same. So making sure that that mechanism is in place whenever this gets, uh, planned and building on what community partners can we bring to the table that can do that follow-up when necessary.
Yeah, I agree, uh, you need some type of processing, ongoing processing resolution, right, uh, for folks, uh, um, you know, who may not be able to have some form of, uh, you know, therapy or something, because a lot of this stuff, uh, needs to be really looked at as traumatization. Because it's, it's difficult to wrap your head around, uh, you know, somebody doesn't like me because of my skin, you know, you know, color of my skin and you not get due process and all kinds of other things, civil rights violations based on that, right? And so you're supposed to walk around, you know, like, uh, you, you, you regular or, you know, just you and somebody's plotting against you. That's unfair, right? Say the least. Uh, but then you have to mentally be able to just overcome that. Some kind of way you're supposed to just leapfrog over all the hurdles and just be solid as a rock and, you know, non aware that this is even there. That's a lot to ask a person for no reason, right? Uh, so I think that needs to be addressed, is how can we get, I mean, we, my agency provides some mental health services, uh, and, and therapy sessions and all that kind of stuff at no cost to any resident in this county from Martinez to Discovery Bay. But it's a small component, it's like one person providing these, uh, these services. So how can we look at it in a more broader aspect from our county agency or somewhere or something, or something, go ahead. For that, to me, and personally, I'm, I'm speaking personally, but also in a general, uh, aspect for, uh, something like that should be brought to the forefront if possible, um, for just residents who, uh, have been affected or haven't been, been affected regardless, you know, because it happened. And if you live in the city or you're a resident of the city or something like that, then you should have, that should be another avenue that's being provided or offered to the public, um, you know, because of what took place. It's just like, it's just really hard sometimes. I mean, I'm, I don't consider myself to be average when it comes to all that, because I expect a lot of that because I've been, you know, a part of it. Um, but I know it's people that's not like me that really don't know how to process that. And you have to have tools, uh, because, you know, just, just try to do it on your own and through, uh, you know, I don't even, you know, know what to call it, but, uh, winging it or whatever, uh, just don't always get it. So you don't always process it in a way where you can kind of like, um, manage. I always use the word manage, because it don't dissipate, it don't dissipate or disappear, but you have to figure out how to mentally manage all of that type of trauma and manage it where you can stay functional, right, in your, you know, societal, you know, responsibility and all that kind of stuff. So, um, I just think the public deserves that, that type of uh, reaching out, you know.
I, I was gonna follow up with, and follow up to the, the, um, work we've already done with listening sessions. Um, there's gonna be a virtual healing symposium to reach more individuals because I wanted to invite a subject matter expert guest, uh, Dr. Harold Lewis, who does this type of trauma healing work from across, you know, the nation, having shown up for Breonna Taylor and others who were healed to start doing some of the healing necessary in the community. Um, and I have enough money for him to do it virtually. And every, all of you will be invited on June twenty-sixth. I took a call now and, uh, he agreed to that, to do that first part for free, but I literally hate asking people from outside of the community to do something for free. And then we came up with the date of July fifteen for him to actually come in. And I'm looking at the Nick Rodriguez Center as a space and it will be open to all. And so, yeah, we, I, I don't want to say, as I've been doing, dipping into my own pocket, when I know we're in a wealthy county and we're Antioch is the second largest city in the county that has resources. I mean, it doesn't make sense for us to, you know, be having a private citizen give five hundred dollars for pizza and this person in the church I'm working with, Genesis, collecting a special, you know, special donations to do something around healing. It just should be, just as we responded to COVID. We should have a response to this to stop the harm that will result in young people who do not trust law enforcement anymore, that are now making poor decisions that will lead them to jail. So invest now or invest later. That's, that's totally how I feel about it. After we had, uh, Alan come in with, um, Brandon and do the sharing your rights as was presented to us, it did bring up some issues for young people. So now we have a session every Wednesday night on looking at some of the, um, work done around civil rights to improve, because you have to empower these young people to know you can make a difference. Don't just carry the pain. And all of that is being done on my NAMI budget that's not necessarily authorized for this particular. So I'm just like pulling funds and going to my board and saying, can we spend money on? It, it, it doesn't make sense. We're not a fully funded program. We get money from the county to recruit volunteers. But we're the place that people come to when there's pain in the community, because they've identified our staff as people who have had them in the past. But, you know, no one wants to be, you know, feeling Robin Peter to pay Paul when, when we have such a wealthy, we have a wealthy county. We should have some one-time-only money. And I did put an email out and asked our, our behavioral health department, don't you have mental health services? One-time-only money that you can put toward this effort, since we were one of the counties on the list of having to revert money back to the state but not spending it fast enough? Because we're one of the counties that have the A three program that's only half staff. I mean, why would we not be proactive? Instead of ten years from now, caging some of these young people who did not get their answers answered and started internalizing their pain. We, we could do it differently. And with that, other faith communities, we saw Genesis step up, but it's kind of splintered and siloed. And we need, as you said, Melvin, to come together and to work with, you know, your organization. So, you know, my phone runs off the hook and I'm not hearing this by myself.
Well, I'm caring for the, potentially the community engagement and funding subcommittee, maybe some opportunities to kind of connect to the work that Melvin and Gigi and. connect to the work that Melvin and Gigi and Renell and others are, are lifting up and to figure out what the R job role is in that. And then if there are opportunities to make requests of the county to support any of that work where it would be aligned with the R job and our kind of mandates and goals. And I, I think what, what might be helpful in that subcommittee, and I'm happy to attend to, is what are opportunities, there's so much community work happening, what are opportunities to support that and align with it? And, and, and look at specifically lifting up some additional kind of healing circles and sessions with our jobs so that we can engage in the kind of listening campaign I think we need to to, to figure out how to move forward with our work this year. So Patrice, I know you all have been working on dates for those, so I don't know if there are any dates for that.
Yeah, initially, I think I indicated in my email to all the members that we were going to resume our subcommittee meetings in June and CE was actually set to go June eighth, which is like two days. So we'll likely reschedule that meeting. Mostly because we need to determine what the agenda items will be following this special meeting. So I know Chris likely will get with you, Melvin, to, to identify another potential date in June for the CE meeting. But, and we can certainly add that to the list of agenda items to maybe identify or start to talk about developing a community healing plan, what events are available that are currently underway that our job could support. If there is, as part of an update to the Equity Committee or PPC committee meeting with regards to any sort of funding that we'd like to see there, we can add those to the, to mention.
Yeah. I think one thing that comes to mind, and I can elaborate more with Chris and everybody else later, is like whenever we and you, you already mentioned it, but just emphasizing like whenever we come up with a plan, just making sure that we have like some sort of like ass through our various bodies within the county to potentially fund different community engagement outreach things, so it's not incumbent on just the community-based organizations or private citizens like Gigi was saying to help fund it, but seeing like, hey, we want a table at these several events that are happening in the county to let people know about upcoming events, healing circles, or the racial justice oversight body in general. What, what is the cost of that and can we leverage any county funding to actually support those efforts? Or do I have to bring my own table and just say, hey, I got my racial justice oversight body hat. Come sign in and I'll let you know when the next meeting is. I can do that, but that's kind of irritating for me because I got a small car.
I think it's in direct alignment with what CE have been working on in the past around developing this community capacity fund, though it was initially structured around how do we best support, provide technical assistance to those emerging organizations? But maybe there's a carve-out for funding for, you know, healing centers or circles or what have you that in a lot of ways is sort of speaking to, to capacity to some degree.
And I like Melvin's last point about also, one of our, our goals that we haven't talked about a lot is bringing more folks in, having the community, you know, on Zoom and in the room at our meetings. So we can also integrate those voices into our work as we go forward.
I think the suggestion that next meeting, I don't know if this has been done because I'm new, but have the next meeting in the community at a time where it's convenient for the community to be. Because those don't necessarily have to be, I know we have public comment, but they don't have to be mutually exclusive. And we can certainly leverage every opportunity to listen. So I, I mean, if it has to be a meeting at six o'clock, then it should be. I think just being responsive is, is one way, at least for the next meeting.
I like that idea. I wonder, Patrice, if we could, I, I do think having a meeting quarterly away is too far that we're going to need to schedule something much sooner as well as with the subcommittees. But I wonder if one option would be scheduling our next meeting in East County, close to where folks are impacted at hours when we think the community can make it to the meeting and then having it be both a meeting where we talk about our work and a community input or listening session.
Sure, I can work on the logistics around all that, but I will challenge the members to also be sure that you can be available in person at an hour that might be off of what we're typically used to. And the only reason why I say that is because this is obviously su- subject to Brown Act. If you have to have quorum and maintain quorum for the entirety of the meeting, otherwise we will have to cancel the meeting. So we can certainly work on that. And if I can, as I reach out to all of you to get your commitments, we make sure we can maintain that and hold that for the entirety of time of that meeting. The other piece I wanted to mention is that being that we have seats on the body that represent the racial justice coalition. So any, any, in any case that we are, our work is adjacent to some of the community groups to be able to move away from some of the restrictions under Brown Act, being able to support any events that they have where our job members can be in attendance of. Now, mind you, please don't all show up where's quorum. But all to say, that way we can ensure that any sort of community meetings where we really want it to be free flowing as necessary, we can look at that strategy as well. So a little bit of both that.
Yeah, I, I agree with that, except just keep in mind, the deeper you go into East County and you're talking about six o'clock, you're challenging those of us who have to come from far away in traffic. There you go.
If we could identify a place that could provide a hybrid option, we'll certainly look into that. I do know all of the supervisors' offices have that hybrid option. Now, mind you, those are smaller locations. We will, we'll, we can look into it for sure.
Yeah, I like the idea of doing it when the community can be there. Just, just know that it's challenging for some of our community to get someplace that's not accessible by transit and during commute hours. We just need to be mindful of that. That's all.
I was gonna say that I noticed that we're not getting through our agenda items this session, like this is and we're having issues getting through agenda items. And I know that we had that big issue with Antioch and what's going on with law enforcement. I don't know if we need to take a look at or reevaluate the whole quarterly meeting thing or whether we need to implement more committees and do more committee work. I know, I know we normally get allowed at this, like doing this drafting kind of stuff. We usually kind of get that done in committees and we get more stuff done in committees. So I don't know if we need to reevaluate that because I, I believe we had a presenter that didn't even get to present. I see another, I'm assuming you were going to give a sheriff's report?
No.
No, okay.
I think we're just discussing.
Okay, I thought it was gonna be a report, but it just seems like we have, like, this is a special session because last time we couldn't get through everything. So we had to create a special session to get to this. And now here, here we are after twelve o'clock. And we still haven't even got to everything, including, you know, number five, which I think was a big point of why we're supposed to review kind of our, our role and everything. And are we gonna, you know, what's our, our role implementing things versus just discussing things versus actually implementing things? But I just want to say that I am encouraged by the work that the police, the, the PE did before, the Center for PE did before. Like what they're doing in other places encourages me that we can do similar things here. But I like, I love the discussion that we all get to talk about all this stuff. But I would like to see more transition implemented. I like to see, get more funding for some of these projects and some of these actual things, boots on the ground. I would love to see more of that happening. Because we could talk about this stuff ad nauseam. We could talk about this forever. And it is a lot of deep-felt feelings about this. But I, I would like to see us move towards getting actually more work and implementation done. That, that's kind of the reason why I'm here, is to actually try to get some work done. So that's what I like to see us figuring out what we're going to do here as supporters committees, subcommittee, and getting to agenda items.
One thing I was gonna mention as they, the topic around like where we could have some of our next meetings more like in the effective sites could also be a conversation that we have at the community funding and engagement subcommittee meeting. Because I do think it is worthwhile trying to identify different parts of the county. Like I would, just like, I don't mind driving from Richmond to Antioch and do it all the time for other things. So I would like to have more of a focused meeting in Antioch where we can have that subcommittee and talk about it and plan like where could we have meetings in other parts of the county where people might want to engage but not necessarily have a forum to engage. I know there's a lot of logistical issues that we need to work out, including county staff, Brown Act. So I think it is a worthwhile agenda item just to have at that next subcommittee meeting and see what general draft action plans we can have and what it's going to take to implement those plans. Like hybrid meeting options, make sure there's enough space, get enough location, so on and so forth.
Yeah, and I just want to say real quickly, and I know we're off on time and folks gotta get out of here. But before we move, please don't leave before a vote take place, or at least hear how you guys want to move forward with the public statements. But I will say that at least I have reached out to a few departments to see if they would be willing to be a look, a, a meeting location for some of the subcommittees. So waiting to hear back on whether or not that will take place. But they've mostly been centralized in Martinez. So I will see if there's any other locations that are out further more, either West County or East County, for sure on that. And then just to make a quick suggestion, our, an update, our next, well, we'll need to reschedule the community engagement and funding subcommittee is originally tentatively scheduled for June eighth. We'll look at another date in June to have that. The diversion subcommittee is slated to take place June fifteenth. And then our data subcommittee is slated to start June twenty-second. So with the remaining agenda items that are here, we can move those over to those subcommittee meetings. So I'm guessing like the share of oversight for us, giving the share for the report can maybe move to the data committee meeting, the community healings circles and sessions and online planning can move to CE. And we can, before we head out, see if folks are ready to go with the folks statement today.
That sounds great. I do want to point out that Christina has her hand up and then Cheryl, and I know we're over time, so.
Yeah, thanks, Shayla. I just want to point out, we do have public comment in the Q and A. I'm not sure if you can see it, but I just wanted to make sure it was seen before the meeting ends today. Can you see it right now, Shayla? If not, I can try to post it in.
No, I don't see it. Cheryl, you want to go? And then we'll go back to the public comment.
Yes, I, I, I think all of that is great. The plan is great for the subcommittees, but my question is not a data subcommittee issue. I purposely wanted to talk about it at this meeting. And because it's a, it's an issue that has to be decided at the general body. It's about the truth act forum. So I apologize that we're over limit and all of that, but they, they, they didn't, there's, it's not my blame. Like, we need to decide, it's something that I wanted to discuss before this body, because it's, it's, it's dealing with that, so.
We have one.
No, we've lost four.
Yeah.
First actions out. Christopher?
Yep.
Said the actions, you said racist, blah, 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 actions.
I think the first one. You are proxy for her. Yeah, okay. Well, then we have, sorry about that.
Well, I missed most of that.
It was a couple of different conversations. We have forum, I think that's the goal.
Okay. And Michael, you hadn't edit?
Yeah, the first, it didn't make sense. It said the actions of racist.
I got you. Yeah, there's a lot of, a lot of copy and paste.
And just to clarify, you said we do have forum right now?
Yes, I didn't realize a lot is here as a service proxy for VA backed, and so we're good to go.
So would it be helpful to go ahead and review the statement, take a vote on it? And then, I mean, if time, if folks have a little time, maybe discuss Cheryl's question about the truth act forum? I'm not sure how folks are all the time, so. But I, I think we should at least try to get this, this draft approved by the board so it can move forward.
Of the, the other of the, of that first one.
Appreciate you.
I don't think you need the word the after have directly impacted disparate outcomes. Maybe use the word also, Christopher, we also vehemently agree.
All right, just, you can stop me anywhere. I just wanted to move down to the
Yeah, I wanted to see this one. This is what I wanted to see. And an interstate section, police violence, yep.
And Patrice and I had talked about having the sign-off be from all committee members rather than just chairs.
All right.
I think it's a different word, not reform, not police reform. It's a different word. Right?
Where, where are you?
First sentence of that paragraph about, that paragraph you're, you have your cursor on. Yeah, it was a different word. I like, it was policing something else. I like the word that they used or that the presenters used.
Yeah, they did. They, they, they
Public safety redesign?
Yeah, public safety redesign.
No, yeah, redesign, that's the word, redesign. Even if it was policing redesign, I don't care about that one, but it was the redesign word that was really good, yeah.
I just have one suggestion at the top.
Yeah.
First, I think it's the first or second paragraph, you refer to this body assembled. But we don't reference, so when you say the racial justice oversight body, you have in practice RJOB. So I think when you reference it later on, instead of this body, the very last sentence, yep, just put the
Yeah, that's a good one. Yeah, and I like the idea of everybody signing off.
Voting members, I wouldn't put my name on it.
Yeah, the voting members.
Oh, meaning just type everybody's
Yeah.
Add his name down here. Okay, I can do that, for sure. With a, you know, with a little help from the OR day. Doesn't have to be right now, but I think that's, that's the So if there are, are there any more substantive edits or revisions that we should discuss? Duly noted that we will add Duly noted that we will add everyone's name to the, to the bottom of this.
I'll reemphasize that. I don't know if it got captured, but I'll reemphasize, what's your name again? You said voting members?
Yeah.
Yeah, vote, voting members are the, our job is what Matt brought up too.
Yeah. There's an S missing, Christopher, on the one, two, three, four, five. The second to the last sentence, uh, uh, line on the, go down one paragraph. That paragraph, go over incidents, plural, right there. There. I think, do you need a comma after locally in that sentence? Towards structural change locally, on the last sentence, paragraph above, paragraph above, locally, comma, which will ensure that such racism cannot contain. Or not cannot, does not. We, we can assure that it cannot, but does not. There you go. Or I don't even know if it's ensure. Is it ensure? Um, or mitigate, maybe? I don't know. But which, which will work towards, or I don't know.
I think ensure is fine.
I think, I think because we said does not, I think it, it works now. But it looks good. Center for Policing Equity to identify, endorse and implement strategies. Reimagine public safety. Well, if we change and reimagine, making our ability to redesign public safety. And justice of reality. Yeah.
Yeah, we follow further questions?
Um, yeah, so we need a motion if there's going to be a vote. So when folks have had a chance to review these, I can scroll up again. You know, we will hear that motion whenever you guys are ready.
I move it.
I'll second it.
So moved by Cheryl, second by Melvin. Patrice, can we get a roll call vote?
Well, call for any discussion you need.
Sorry, open discussion, public comment. Any discussion, any public comment at this time? All right, turn it over to you, Patrice.
Hey, Alicia Jackson? I agree. Renell Ellis?
Yeah.
Michael Pearson?
Yes.
Shayla Bonner?
Yes.
Melvin Willis, you second, so I'm taking your yes?
Yes.
Shannon Orton? Alana Matthews?
Yes, with the understanding that the motion was we accept the amended public statement as a statement for the board, just to clarify that, because we just said ISO moved. So moved, and we didn't clarify what we're moving, so I'm a yes vote for that.
Yes.
Ellen McDowell?
Yes.
Issa E. McCurlough?
Yeah.
Keep us on our toes.
Aristotle Garibet? Ms. Cheryl, you move, you move?
Yes, and yes, with that clarification, yes, it is on the amended.
But we have, sorry, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, yes, this is a one extension. Motion carries.
Thank you, Patrice.
Um, thank you all for that. I'm sorry, we, we've gone over. And I'll just point out to Michael's point as far as the agendas, because we knew this was something that the whole body would need to sign off on. We wanted to give everybody the space to come back. That's why we needed to have a special session. That session was scheduled for two hours, right? You guys are usually meeting for three. Had we met for three, I'm sure we probably could have gotten to everything on the agenda this time around as well. And as you see, you know, it took us about two twenty or so to actually get all of this done. So just, just trying to shoehorn some time in to, to do this in response to the moment, because the moment is urgent. And that's, that's been the, the reason for the sort of going over and sort of the inability to hit all of our agenda items today.
One last thing before we close out. We initially had the next order, since this is a special meeting. Our next quarterly was set to be scheduled for June twenty-seventh, but I did get word that that's for a meeting, so a lot of folks may not be able to attend that one. The following quarterly meeting is scheduled for September twenty-sixth. So if folks are wanting to meet a little bit sooner than that, we can certainly set up another full body meeting sometime in July, and I can reach out to all of you with that. However, if not, and you wish that we just move forward with the dates as set, we can certainly do that and meet again in September. So just wanted to lift that up for you all to decide. I think we have enough unresolved issues. We should meet in later in June or in July. I will reach out to all of you to, you'll do it for July day.
Chair Bonner, is meeting adjourned?
Yes, we are adjourned.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, everyone.